...of November 2nd, 2015 order. We do have a forum, let's please stand and pledge their flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda, approve the agenda as posted. In accordance with the open meeting law here in place, all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Liljgren. To approve the agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes, a copy of the minutes for the special work session of October 19th, 2015. And the regular meeting of October 19th, 2015 are enclosed, what's the wish of the council?
Approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Canopla, second by Councilman Gushick. Approve the minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills, group checks 92929 through 92994, calling 153, 04583. Mr. Gushick?
Page one, please. Health insurance is an expensive item, isn't it? Page two. Page three. Page four.
What's lift station UTC? So the names are there or just where they're located?
Yes, all those individuals are adjacent to a lift station. And we have them mow the grounds and maintain the grounds next to them so that we don't have to go with a main special trip with our orders to get up to those locations.
Looks like a good deal for $2.22, have that one signed. Oh, that's something else, okay. Okay, page four. Final tallies are on page five. I make a motion to approve the bills for $153,045.83.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Alderman Hercock. Approve the bills, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries awards, donations, presentations, proclamations, awards, 2014 Water Fluoriation Quality Award, Water Treatment Facility, Minnesota Department of Health, accept, Greg?
Yeah, we received an award from the Minnesota Department of Health for fluoridation over at the water plant. So I just wanted to acknowledge that the gentlemen over there have done an excellent job the past year.
What's the wish of the council? Got a motion to accept the award?
Both of them. Second.
Got a motion by Mary Zilka, second by Alderman Hercock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries donations, resolution 2015-86, accept donations third quarter, adopt, Laurie?
Resolution 2015-86 lists the donations for the third quarter, including the donation from Burnet Company to go towards the beverage carts. From biking around Minnesota, the Bike Grab, Extravaganza Canadian Cup for the golf course improvements. The Fire Relief Association to help equip Engine One. The mayor from France, Vincent Capocanalis, he presented the city and the mayor with a baseball cap holder shirt as a part of Sister City Exchange. And then the Sons of the American Legion donated some money for a fence at Legion Park.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2015-86.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Canopla. Resolution 2015-86, resolution, call a roll, please.
Boyham?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Hearing.
Minnesota Board of Firefighters Training and Education, additional funding, word, hard?
Yes, the Minnesota Board of Firefighters Training and Education provide the city and the firemen with a grant every year to help pay for training. Each fire department is allotted an amount of money and if the departments don't use all the money, it's put back in the kitty, so to speak. And then allotted to departments that have used over the amount of training that they were allotted in the first place. So we had enough new firefighters that we had used up our allotment and we were awarded an additional $4,500 for training.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Hanson. To accept the additional funding, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries consent agenda, denial notification, Federal Emergency Management Agency JAWSa Life Grant, receive. Request to remove name Kim Aubrey petition for surface improvements on Elm Street, receive. withdrawal letter Keith and Annette Bellone, public improvement 370 degree assessment, receive. What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Liljgren. To approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries public carings and lettings, abandoned well sealing, control wells, Greg?
This past fall, the city applied for and received a grant to seal abandoned wells around the city here and municipal wells. The grant was in the amount of $8,237.36. We did receive that grant, we accepted bids for sealing one of our wells, well number eight that was abandoned. And that little bid came from control wells on Wade Park in the amount of $7,740. So tonight we've asked that the council award the bid to control wells in the amount of $7,740 to be charged to the saltwater grid.
What's the wish of the council?
So.
Second. Got a motion by Mary Zilka, second by Councilman Hanson. To award the bid for $7,740 to control wells at Wade Park to seal abandoned well. Any discussion?
What happened to the excess money you don't use?
The remainder of that will be used to restore the site. We'll have to remove sidewalk, replace the sidewalk as well as some staff time for that over there, so we'll use up the full amount.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 2017 Plow Truck Award, Greg?
As we've discussed in the past, the city is looking at purchasing a new plow truck for its fleet. We currently have four plow trucks with one spare, the one that we're looking at replacing is 1994 plow truck with 70,000 miles on it. Although it doesn't have that many miles on it, it does have 7,100 hours on it, which is more of the issue. It's starting to show its age, you know, it's a 1994, so it's already 21 years old. Plowing is difficult or hard on equipment, so it's time that we start looking at replacing it. One of the other issues that we're looking at is about a 12 to 14 month lead time on plow trucks. And so tonight I'd ask the council to authorize us to purchase a new plow truck. There's two separate vendors, one for the chassis, which is the cab and the frame of the plow truck. And the other one would be the plow truck, the sander, the plow, the wing, and all the various components that go onto making a plow truck. Now, this is 12 to 14 months out, so we're probably not going to get this until January of 2017. But I do want to get the process started knowing the long lead time for the plow truck. So tonight we're asking for approval. It would be split into two fiscal years, in 2016 as well as 2017 to try to minimize the impact to our overall budget. But we'd be looking at approval to purchase off the state bid, a 2017 Mack single axle truck from Nuss Equipment on Roseville in the amount of $8,458. And the plow truck equipment from Towmaster in the amount of $72,962. This would be consistent with the plow truck that we purchased a year and a half ago. So it'll be very similar to that equipment there.
What's the wish of the council? Can you get a motion for discussion at least?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Hanson. Discussion?
So we're, this is the spare truck we're getting rid of.
We're gonna be getting rid of the spare truck, correct?
And in a couple of years, there's gonna be another one that probably will fall right into that category.
Right, right now we have, you know, the new ones are 2015. We have 2006, a 2000, a 95, and a 94. So, you know, ideally they would have spaced the age of those plow trucks a little bit farther apart. It is what it is, I mean, obviously at the time they had a need for a 94 and a 95 back to back. So we're looking at upgrading the 94 currently, then probably in a couple of years we'll be looking at upgrading the 95 at that point in time as well.
They can't reuse any of the wings or anything from the spare truck?
Not the wings, we have reused some of the pows, but we already used that one on the new one there. So we do reuse what we can out there, but unfortunately with this one, there's, you know, it's to a point where it's just, it's used up at this point.
Probably upgraded to, you know, okay.
Any other discussion?
Yes, there was some talk about the purchase of a single axle versus a double axle. Does that deal with maneuverability?
Yes, it does deal with maneuverability. Normally when you go to a tandem axle vehicle, it's because you want to haul more products, more sand. With our limited space, you know, in town here, we don't necessarily have to haul it that far. Our salt shed is right here, so if they need to make the second trip to get more sand, it's easy to do that as opposed to, you know, being a half an hour away or an hour away. It's right in town. Plus, there's the added bonus maneuverability, you can make tighter turns with a shorter vehicle.
Greg, would you explain the state bid and why there's not multiple bids on here for us to choose?
Yep, with the state bid, the state of Minnesota actually goes out and acquires pricing on various items. So plow trucks, pickups, you know, a number of things that pows themselves. And they list how much those pieces of equipment are from the various vendors. And then municipalities such as ourself can go to that particular contract and purchase items off of that, knowing that it's already been bid. Vendors have already given their price for it, so we don't have to go through that same process in terms of advertising, receiving calls. The work has already been done through the state of Minnesota.
Thank you. Remember that this was part of the capital improvement plan?
It was part of our capital improvement plan, we identified it for 2016. Obviously, we haven't passed a budget on that yet, but it was something that we've identified, at least for a couple of years, as a need that we needed to replace those plow trucks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance number 7786 series, summary publication ordinance number 776 series, amend city chapter code two, introduced on 10/19, adopt. What's the wish of the council?
I move that we adopt 778.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Canopla. To adopt ordinance number 7786 series, the summary publication, we adopted 77 two weeks ago, three, whatever it was, so just the summary version of that one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ordinance, call a roll.
Hercock?
Yes.
Benjgren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyham?
Yes.
Carries.
Ordinance 796 series, amend city chapter code 11, land use regulations, portable storage units, introduced 10/19, adopt, Greg?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 79, this pertains to portable storage units like the president indicated. This regulates the number of portable storage units that you can have on a site. So tonight we'd be looking at adopting ordinance number 79 so that we can have this in place to regulate storage units a little bit more in this particular cause.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Liljgren, second by Councilman Gushick. Ordinance number 796 series, amend city chapter code 11, any discussion?
Is it just unregulated right now?
Currently, right now the ordinance is silent on storage units. So this is putting in place a couple of restrictions pertaining to them.
Is there a problem with these?
Not specifically, I mean, we've had them where they've been placed in the right way, so they have the potential to damage streets and that type of stuff. They are becoming more and more prevalent where you see them in front of houses in terms of moving. And so we want to try to identify that a little bit more. There is a timeframe, so that the moving versus isn't going to be regulated, but, you know, you get the Walmart that's remodeling, the Burger King that's remodeling, that type of stuff. It'll help limit the numbers for those.
Well, I think it's bits up and coming on people moving into storage pods, living in storage pods.
Yep.
So kind of regulates it, they're not a livable dwelling.
Plus signage on them, the new, what we're gonna be dealing with, sign ordinance that did mention on there that can have place for company who owns it.
As long as it's adhered to the actual storage unit itself, so it takes to it, you know, painted on and that type of stuff, then it would be part of the storage unit. And that's why you'll notice this one, if it's approved tonight, would take a back jam reverse so that the new signing ordinance would then be in place once the storage units are in place at the same time.
So it would be like McDonald's putting a sign on one of these and then moving it from one resident to another for a certain amount of time. They're gonna do that because it just has to have that company's name attached, okay?
It would be an integral part of the storage unit itself, so not something that you just.
You can't hang a banner.
Paint it on, it would be, it would look as if here that it's fully attached to the unit.
And I'd say we've had some issues with that because I've received phone calls three or four times on that, railcar, minyard, things like that, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, ordinance, call a roll, please.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyham?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Ordinance number 806 series, amend city chapter code 11, land use regulations, off-street parking, introduced on 10/19, Greg?
Ordinance number 80 pertains, like you said, to the off-street parking component. So this evening we'd be looking at the shared use component of it where we calculate parking spots. So if you have a business that has an evening and a morning type of activity, we would be looking at that as well as allowing the calculation of on-street parking to be used for businesses up to three spots, assuming they have that amount of parking in front of their property. So tonight we'd be looking for approval of ordinance number 80 from the council.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 80.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Mary Zilka. Approve ordinance number 806 series, amend city chapter code 11, land use, off-street parking, any discussion?
If I'm reading this correctly, the only type of business this affects is bed and breakfasts as well as home occupation.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, ordinance, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyham?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Hearing.
Resolution 2015-81, accept petition and order feasibility report, surface and/or utility improvement on Elm Street, just tabled from 10/5, consider, Greg?
Like we discussed at the work session this evening, we did receive, and we seen on the consent agenda, we did receive one request from one of the property owners that originally signed a petition for the cul-de-sac on Elm Street to be removed from that. That brings down the petitioning individuals from 50.4% to 21.9%. We've kind of discussed about the size of the cul-de-sac and the need for it, as well as, you know, potentially the impacts of the potential cul-de-sac down there. The study that we conducted for the traffic analysis over there indicated that there were 37 vehicles on average per day that went down that street. So to give you an idea, if you went to the store and you came back, that was two because you crossed that area twice, there was a total of 37 of those instances. The peak came at, you know, at three vehicles per hour, so roughly every 20 minutes there was a vehicle that came by there. That low amount of vehicles really doesn't warrant the increase in cost to the city for a cul-de-sac down there. You'll look, if you, I don't have it up on the screen now, but you recall back in, we did have the total from 2003, it was considerably smaller than what we have there now. We did look at that back in September when this first came up. So we've increased the size of the cul-de-sac from what it originally was back in 2003 to what we see today. It obviously does not still meet our current standards of Hoover to put in, you know, a cul-de-sac in the subdivision, but it is considerably bigger than what was there back in the 2003 timeframe. So this evening, you know, knowing the number of vehicles, knowing the costs associated with it, we would be recommending that we do not pass resolution 2015-81 because of those items.
This makes sense.
What's the wish of the council on 2015-81?
I want to make sure I get the wording here correct, because we're gonna.
Approve and then fail.
Yeah. I move we accept resolution 2015-81.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, got a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Councilman Gushick to approve resolution 2015-81, discussion?
Yeah, there was some discussion about maybe a promise to put in a larger, but then you kind of cleared that up, that that was pretty much discussing just what we have there for an easement or our right of way.
True, the 66 by 66 is the easement that is given for a turnaround or a cul-de-sac there. If you go out and you look at the current turnaround that's there, you'll see there's a joint on the north, well, on all four quadrants, where we've actually added some blacktop to it to make it a little bit bigger than what it was back in 2003. Where that joint is at, that matches pretty close to what was back in 2003 based on the total that we have. And so we added additional blacktop on there to try to make it a little bit bigger and easier for individuals to turn around. We did speak with both past and current employees in regards to what was promised and what wasn't promised. And what we have out there exceeds what was there previously.
Well, you know, part of that easement, there's trees sitting on it which were there even before this all took place, sort of tells me it wasn't into that area, Greg?
Do I understand this correctly, that this is what I call one of Mr. Boyham's favorites, where a yes means no?
No.
No means no.
No means no.
No means no, okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call a roll.
Hamfler?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Gushick?
No.
Canopla?
No.
Boyham?
No.
Hercock?
No.
Liljgren?
No.
Zilka?
No.
Motion fails.
On new business, amend job description and advertisement to fill park maintenance worker one, Greg?
As you may recall, at the previous meeting, Chuck Bulwark is looking at retiring at the end of the year. And so we are looking at amending the job description as well as advertising for his position. Generally speaking, it takes about two months to get a new person in place, so we're looking at starting the advertising process so that when Chuck takes his leave officially has the retirement, we would have somebody in place to fill that position once that occurs after the first year. So in a nutshell, what the job description changes would be for our park maintenance one worker, a Class A driver's license instead of having that currently upon hire. We'd be looking at obtaining that within six months. We would also require the applicant to obtain pesticide applicator's license within six months of being hired as opposed to being a preferable qualification. And then we added an item in there as far as preferable qualification, to have a certified arborist or an associate's degree in urban forestry. Just knowing that trees are becoming more and more prevalent throughout the city as well as the diseased trees that we'd be looking at maintaining or identifying throughout the city.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Liljgren, second by Mary Zilka. Amend job description, the advertisement to fill, park maintenance worker one, any discussion?
Yes, what is this, how would you use this person's status?
Or do you have it handy?
I don't have it handy, but I believe it's between $16,000 and $17,000 an hour, I believe.
Because I noticed that you're requesting that you would like to have a degree in urban forestry and I guess that's going to be a minimum wage position.
True.
Greg, what's the reasoning for Class A?
In the event, in the event one of our plow truck drivers, you know, is sick or whatever, then they would have to fill that position.
So a plow truck requires a Class A license?
Okay. And all of the current plow truck drivers having A license, and it would be consistent with that.
Greg, was Chuck a certified arborist?
He was not a certified arborist, he did go to school for it, but he was not certified. He did go to classes to have certification for invasive species, you know, the disease, various diseases, Dutchella and that type of stuff. And so having a certified arborist here on that same path for the trees as well, and that's kind of what we're looking for here.
Well, if we can find someone with those qualifications, I think it'd be great for the community.
I think so, too.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance number eighty-one, six series, amend city chapter code five, sign regulations introduced. Call your man.
Okay. These are, again, proposed changes to the sign ordinance based on just the need to update some things and clarify some things as well as a U.S. Supreme Court decision from this past summer. The Supreme Court basically indicated that we are not able to regulate signs based on wording on the signs, except when it's really within circumstances. So we're looking to clarify some of these ordinances, make sure we're complying with the Constitution and there's federal law cases and federal laws and all that. Prevent clutter, make sure we are good, fair, and consistent enforcement. A number of purposes that are already listed in the ordinance the way it is today. We would be making some changes. A number of things wouldn't change. So some of the things that are exempt, for instance, the signs during political seasons would still be allowed. Things like signs in public right of way would not be allowed as they are now today. Some signs that we exempt currently in the ordinance, the proposal would be to eliminate those exemptions. Signs that we have to read, based on that court case again, if you have to read them, we shouldn't be regulating them in the same way that we have been. And so some of those signs, real estate signs, construction signs, those can still not be exempted anymore. We would be exempting newly, things that would change in the ordinance. We would have an exemption for signs less than one half square feet. We would be exempting signs that are on school district, county, state, or federal property. We would be exempting signs that are in business and industrial districts and in JR three districts that are more than a hundred feet away from the road if they meet certain size limitations. Again, those signs would be, the intent would be those signs are not visible from the public right of way and not contributing to clutter. Plagues would be changed in how they are exempted. They are currently exempted, but they would be changed so that you could have up to fifty square feet of flags on residential property. You not need a permit for those. Any one sign or any one flag cannot be more than forty square feet. Commercial would be higher limits, three hundred square feet to six hundred square feet without conditional use permit for flags. Dumpster is portable storage units. Again, there was talk about these and questions about these earlier. The way that that's worded is that they have to be intimately attached and that they have to be owned and maintained by a company that's for that purpose of waste management or storage. So it couldn't be something that I, as a personal landlord, would buy and decide to pay something over on top of it because I'm not a waste management company or a storage company. And so that's how that's worded there. Also, personal property, things like seminoles, cemetery plots or gravestones. Murals would continue to be exempted, but we would have, hopefully, a better definition of what those are and where they can be located. And then city-owned property, anything that's approved by the council, beyond city-owned property would be exempted. Permit requirements, we would require a permit now only for signs that are over seven feet in height or that require building code approval. But even for those signs that do not meet that standard, they would come against the person's limit for the property unless they were otherwise exempted, like the house square foot exemption. Residential districts, we would continue to have an eight square foot maximum for one sign. But the overall size limit would go up from eight square feet to sixteen square feet on a property, and there would not be a limit on the number of signs. As long as they stay within the sixteen square feet. That's for properties that have a one, a single-family home or a two-family home. For properties, residential properties that have three or more lawn units on the property, they would also be limited to eight square feet for every one sign. And they would have varying levels of square footage allowed based on their road frontage. Those with more road frontage would have more signage available to them. And then we would make an exception there for the signs that are typically used to, like, say, announce a residential subdivision. As long as they're thirty-two square feet or less, eight feet or less in height, and they're within thirty feet of the right of way, then those ones could be laid. In business districts, the only major change is that we are allowing for every property to have at least fifty square feet of signage regardless of their road frontage. And in certain circumstances, businesses would be allowed an additional fifty square feet if they have a rear entrance or something, a side entrance that's used often. And no changes in name and last of history. Non-performing signs would be allowed to remain as long as they weren't expanded. That's basically the same language we have now. It would just be clarified that if we didn't have sufficient evidence to show what it was, we're not legally advised in the time of construction that it likely that we wouldn't be required to move on those cases. And then we wanted to make sure that you were aware that these proposed changes would now allow for not an increase in the size of signs in commercial districts and industrial districts, but that it would allow for off-premise advertising. And so billboard kind of things of limited size and height. And so we want to make sure you're aware of that in case that was something to discuss. So this will be the first reading of those proposed changes. We'll be holding a hearing next Monday at our planning commission meeting. And if I was ready, we'll come back.
Got a motion to introduce.
I'll introduce ordinance number eighty-one.
Ordinance number eighty-one has been introduced. Ordinance number eighty-one A, six series summary publication, ordinance eighty-one.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number eighty-one A.
Got a motion by Councilman Hansen to introduce eighty-one A. Ordinance number eighty-two, six series, amend city chapter code eleven, sign regulations. Introduce. Craig?
Yeah, in ordinance number eighty-two, what we're looking at doing specifically in chapter eleven is removing all of the areas that we call out, any sort of sign ordinance. We refer, we've changed it to refer back to chapter five, which we had just introduced here, so that all of the sign regulations are in chapter five as opposed to some in chapter eleven and seven and five. So we removed all of that in chapter eleven. In a nutshell, that's what this ordinance update reflects.
Got a motion to introduce ordinance eighty-two?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock to introduce ordinance number eighty-two. Introduce ordinance number eighty-two A, six series summary publication, ordinance eighty-two, six series sign.
So.
Motion by Councilman Canopla to introduce eighty-two A. Resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty-seven, appoint responsibility authority. City manager?
Yeah, this is the, due to the state's data practices law, you have to designate a responsible authority for all of the data within the city that they maintain and control. In having somebody designated to do that, I think previously it was listed that Dan Vogt was the responsible authority. This was myself.
What's the wish of the council on resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty-seven?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash eighty-seven.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Hansen for resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty-seven. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call a roll.
Hansen?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Ljegren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Kantler?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty-eight, operate sale of bonds, public improvement three seventy-three. David Drone. Craig, Laurie?
David is not here tonight, but I laid on your table the copy of resolution two thousand and fifteen dash eighty-eight. And in the packet was the letter of recommendation from David Drone Associates. We have the two thousand and fifteen petition projects basically complete. Total cost of all the projects was just over one point, one million fifty-three thousand dollars. Considering the Department of Health grant, we received some prepaid assessments and then adding in underwriting, cost of issuance and rounding. David is recommending that we authorize the sale of bonds of one million forty-five thousand dollars to finance the two thousand and fifteen petition projects. Then David will take this, they will, he will go out and solicit bids for the purchase of the bonds, and then he should be back at our December second meeting with the results of the bond sale and or the bonds, or the sale of the bonds at that time.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt two thousand and fifteen dash eighty-eight.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Oldren, on resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty-eight. Operate sale of bond, public improvement three seventy-three. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call a roll.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Ljegren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Kantler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty-nine, declare surplus property and operate sale thereof, vehicle. Laurie?
This resolution would authorize the sale or declare surplus and authorize the sale of a two thousand and seven Dodge Durango from the police department. We, they've received their vehicle that the council ordered in earlier this year. And so this is the vehicle they will be getting rid of, and they would like to sell it.
What's the wish of the council?
So. Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Alderman Hercock to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash eighty-nine. Discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call a roll.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Ljegren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Kantler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Anybody got any reports?
I just have a quick announcement. I'll be going to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities in Alexandria next Tuesday and Friday. The John's going also. I have been appointed by the president of the Coalition as a board member, on board of directors, and also have been appointed co-chair of the CAS and LGA. So it'll be interesting to learn some new things and work with legislators and hopefully we can continue to bring LGA money to the community, which is extremely important and possibly even elevated some to previous highs.
Anyone else? Staff, anything?
Just wanted to remind everybody that we do have that public hearing for the sign ordinance on November ninth at six thirty.
And we're meeting for a budget at five o'clock on November. Councilmember Boyum, I went to the Greater Minnesota Cities Area Meeting in Becker on the twenty-second of October. And one of the takeaways I had from that meeting was they did a demonstration on safety in active shooters and showed some examples in council chambers that, you know, might not be arranged very well for safety purposes. That there are some, you know, safety grants out there from OSHA to help give her some security items to help add safety features to council chambers or else do some surveys and assessments of the areas and facilities to ensure that there's a better safety around in case of that event wherever it takes place. So that's something that we will look at in excess of all of the city facilities and bring back some recommendations to.
Anyone else? Hearing none. We'll recess till Wednesday night, October, November fourth, at five P.M. Hear the council chambers for budget meetings.